Good evening. I hereby call this meeting, Thursday, April 28, 2022, the Tacoma Public Schools Board to order. Shall we please rise and make the flag school? The pledge allegiance to the flag, and not a state or county, is one nation, one country, and one people. To the reasons of all. Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historical lands of the Pu'alep tribe of Indians.
Director, could you please turn your microphone on? Thank you.
Absolutely. Is that better? Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historic lands of the Pu'alep tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Pu'alep tribe. We acknowledge this serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage on their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and sociopolitical realities. General Counsel Trueblood, please call the roll.
Yes, good evening. President Bobright?
Here.
Vice President Keating?
Here.
Director Leon?
Here.
Director Stroger?
Here.
And Director McElroy?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Fabulous. Okay, item number five. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'm moved to adopt the agenda.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Do we have any questions about the agenda or changes? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? We have an agenda. Okay. Recognition, six point oh is recognition of staff, students, and community. Six point one, recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to the Institute for Community Leadership.
Good evening, Board and beloved community. My name is Amanda Scott-Thomas. I am the Director of the Community Partnership Office, and tonight's with pleasure that I bring before you this month's Gold Star Community Partner. So as you know, Tacoma Public Schools defines partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, the school district, and the greater Tacoma community. Partners are committed to supporting student academic success and success of the whole child. Partners work with and invest in the education of our children and youth whose future in turn will affect the quality of life in the entire Tacoma community. When it comes to student success, Tacoma Public Schools recognizes that we cannot do it alone. And in recognition of an investment of time, talent, and resources for TPS students, families, and staff, the Gold Star Community Partner Award signifies honor and thanks to a community partner who has made a difference by doing what's best for kids. So tonight, we are honoring the Institute for Community Leadership, which is a community-based nonprofit organization whose mission is to provide ethical leadership, nonviolence, and civic engagement learning to students to increase reading, writing, oratory, listening skills while imbuing them with confidence to succeed in both of the classroom and the community leadership role. The program provides peer coaching, leadership. It strengthens intergenerational and interracial social relationships to increase civic engagement and success in school as well as resiliency. The Institute for Community Leadership provides classes and programming with schools and community organizations in more than 100 schools and 17, or 100 school districts in 17 states and five countries. Headquartered in Kent, Washington, at the Jack Odell Education Center, home-based programming, this home-based program serves young people aged 14 to 24 in Washington State with a focus on the Puget Sound area. A highlight for participants is the program's cultural leadership exchanges, which occur each spring and summer break. They run one to eight weeks in length, and teachers and students travel throughout the West Coast and nation meeting with educators, civic and cultural groups, municipalities, Native nations, and business groups around the nation. And one of our students, I think it's Asia Bennett, she was a sophomore. She said about the program, "The Institute for Community Leadership means to me family, building each other up and coming together within our own cultural and spiritual power. It helps with writing skills and social skills. It's helped me reflect on myself, my mindset, and how I treat others, and even how I treat myself and represent myself. It has helped me come out of my comfort zone and guided me on a path that is relevant for my future. Before the Institute, I was more to myself. Now I am comfortable being uncomfortable and speaking up for what I believe in." So tonight, we have with us Nyla Rosen from the Institute for Community Leadership, and she brought the rest of the crew with her, and we're going to have her come with some words as well as the student participant. Can we give her a hand?
Yes, absolutely.
Good evening. Thank you on behalf of the Institute for Community Leadership for the opportunity to join you this evening. And Dr. King teaches, "When we fail to participate civically, the content of democracy is emptied." We appreciate Tacoma Public Schools dedication to quality leadership education and civic education. And I would like to present, Margarita Sanchez is a junior at Lincoln High School to share a few words.
Good evening, and thank you for being here. Thank you for having me here. As a student from Lincoln High School, the Institute for Community Leadership shares our gratitude for receiving this award and recognizing our students and staff on having students getting recognized on working with civic engagement. It's important for our students and staff and teachers, students, and parents to get involved more into civic engagement and knowing the time that we're living in racism, materialism, and militarism. And it is also important for us to know as people to know our connection with our cultural power and our political power. It's also important to know the time that we are living in. And thank you so much for having us and letting us have connections here in Tacoma and letting our organization grow. Thank you.
So we'd like to take a picture. If we can bring the entire group up into the deus. You guys can stay where you are, but if you would stand up, if we could get a photo, that would be awesome.
And while you're walking up, I just want to say that I'm so proud of all of you for the hard work that you do. We're obviously very supportive of civic, learning to be civic leaders, and thank you all for working so hard to help our students.
Board of Directors, you might want to circle up around the front so that you're not hitting.
Okay, well, that was exciting. Okay. Moving on to actually a really exciting portion of our agenda tonight. We have some students to honor. So I will, six point two, we'll start with some student athletes that we're going to recognize and support and celebrate, I should say. So we'll start with six point two, recognition of Mount Tacoma wrestler Zeta Lee as the state champion.
So I'm going to read the my little part, and then I'm going to turn over to James Neal, who's going to give you a little more background information.
Is that on?
I don't think so.
May I have the speaker up? I think you just speak louder. Yeah, it's on.
Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support on behalf of the Director of Athletics and Activities recommends that the Board of Directors recognize Mounttaoma High School sophomore wrestler Zeta Lee as a 3A state champion in 110 weight class the 2021-2022 school year.
Good evening. My name is James Neal. I'm the Director of Athletics for Tacoma Public Schools. I have the pleasure of introducing Zeta Lee, who is a Mounttaoma High School sophomore who competed her sophomore season in varsity wrestling with a record of seven and one, with her only loss coming in the West Central District Tournament. She finished the season as the girls' state wrestling champion in weight class 110, and is the first female wrestler at Mounttaoma history to win a state title. She also competes in the offseason with the Ford Wrestling Club and travels out of state to wrestling tournaments where she competes against the nation's top talent. I'd like to introduce Zeta Lee, who is also a Bernie All-Star, where I was her elementary school principal. Congratulations. And I have a copy of the board recognition for you, and we'd love to have you go up and shake the hand of our school board members.
Did you want a picture too, or no?
We could do a picture at the end with all of our athletes, if that works.
Congratulations, great job.
Sure.
Okay. Item, item six point three, recognition of stadium diver Niko Panakati, a state champion. Oh boy, I'm really bad at that. Sorry for the.
He's got a really good name, doesn't he?
He does, I love it.
Niko Panakati.
Oh, I love it.
So Niko is a state champion diver from Stadium High School. He is a senior who competed his senior season varsity diving by beating every dive record stadium has ever had. He won every six-metre dive that he participated in and the eleven dive, the eleven dive league meets as well, and finished the season as a 3A boys' state dive champion with 377.4 points. Top-scoring dives include a front two-and-a-half pike, back one-and-a-half somersault, one-and-a-half twist, and an inward two-and-a-half tuck. Niko is a four-year varsity letterman at Stadium High School. He is a PADI rescue scuba diver, former competitive rock climber, and a certified lifeguard. He regularly volunteers in habitat restoration and cleanups as well as rockfish survey dives and does underwater videography. Niko is also academically successful, carrying a GPA of 3.5 and five AP credits, three more in progress. He has been accepted by Cal State University Monterey Bay to study marine science and intends to pursue a career in marine biology. He's no stranger to hard work that leads to his athletic success. Not only has he put in years of training in the one-metre springboard, but he's also a skilled flip diver, a new Olympic sport at heights of up to 100 feet. As a PADI rescue scuba diver, he has logged 60 dives since his first certification at age 10. Now, he works over 10 hours every week keeping others safe in the pool as a Metro Parks Tacoma lifeguard. Niko's also currently in the running for a National Interscholastic Swimming Coaches Association All-American Top 100 Dive List. Niko, come on up and receive your.
Okay. And last but not least, six point four, recognition of Silas Westler Elijah Kater, state champion.
Elijah Kater is a Silas High School junior who competed his junior season in varsity wrestling with a record of 29 and 0. His combined high school record is 29 wins and zero losses. She finished the season as a 3A boy, 120-pound state wrestling champion. Elijah earned his very first varsity letter as a Silas High School, in Silas High School wrestling this year. He is currently traveling around the nation and competing in freestyle Greco-Roman wrestling. He has punched his ticket into the High School Fargo World National Championship Tournament at Reno World. Elijah placed fifth place in the whole nation. He is planning on attending a wrestling college after his senior year of high school, which he already has some offers of interest. He's no stranger to having fun, building team camaraderie, and he's also a Washington National Team member. He travels throughout the United States, competing and going to training camps, and is currently ranked number one in the state out of all high school boys in his weight class, and is currently also out of state tonight, wrestling in Las Vegas. So he's not here to accept this, but I'm assuming they're on Facebook Live watching. So congratulations, Elijah Kater. If we could have Niko and Zeta come up really quick, and we'll do a photo with our school board. We'll be complete with this recognition.
Well, we're all very proud of all three of you, so congratulations.
Families can come up and snap a photo.
Okay, should we do one at a time?
Be in the picture?
Nope, I'm good.
Congratulations, you guys. Great job.
Thank you for getting our exercise tonight. This is great. Right, Superintendent, we are now on to seven point oh, which is Superintendent Report. I'm going to let you start and introduce the.
Yes, good evening, and we're going to carry on the tradition. And Dr. Forrest Greek, I think, is here to join us with our whole educator recognition, and then I'll just give a few comments afterwards as well. So, Mr. Greek.
Good evening. Thank you, Superintendent Dr. Garcia, and members of the board. So here we are again, April. On behalf of Tacoma Public Schools and the whole educator initiative, I would like to take this opportunity to formally recognize our security staff. This team is comprised of 25 campus security officers located across our secondary school. There are two at each of our comprehensive high schools and one in each of our middle schools. In addition to that, we have four school patrol officers who are mobile and support our elementary, middle, and high school across the district. They are tasked simply with keeping our children, staff, and visitors safe each and every day. They connect with students and proactively lead, support the whole child. Thank you, security team, for amazing work. And here with us today is Quinn and Ron. Would you like to stand up? And then the proud director of the team, over here, Mike. And everyone to be here as well to support this amazing team. So again, thank you so much for your work and support of our kids across the district and, of course, our staff and our, and students and community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you to all of the security staff for, we're very grateful the work you do.
Just a couple of quick nouncements and reminders. First and foremost, I just want to echo our extreme support for our safety and security team. It is not an easy job, and they do it with grace and compassion. Oftentimes, they're the, a frontline to helping in very difficult situations, and we recognize that, and so we're extremely grateful. In that same spirit, I also want to recognize that it is the last week of April, and we are down to the final stretch. We have 30-ish-plus days of school left. And I think that brings a little anticipation of excitement as it becomes spring. And at the same time, it's a little scary in the sense of what are we going to do for the summer? What does that mean for me next year? I'm transitioning. And so lots of emotions during this time. And so I want to thank our staff, our students, and our community because whether we recognize or not, we have been through a worldwide pandemic. It's had an emotional toll on all of us, and we're still battling COVID. And so although we're back in school and folks are not wearing masks in certain situations, and some are wearing masks in certain situations, COVID still is with us. And so our community has done a phenomenal job of trying to continue to stick together, and we recognize it is a process, and we are better together. Lots of questions, although you can see spring sports and you see performances, and the questions for a lot of kids are, are we going to have graduations? And I'll say it again, yes, we will have graduations. We are scheduled to be in the Tacoma Dome. Yes, families will be invited. Yes, staff will be there. Lots of questions of, can we have dances? And the answer is yes, you can work with your school and dances and have those celebrations as well. So we just ask that you continue to ask questions. We'll give you the latest updated guidance. We get COVID new guidance every week, and so we will continue to follow that and do our best. And so happy April, and we're shifting into May. And then my last statement is, because we won't have a board member, just a Happy Mother's Day in advance to all the mothers out there. Those of students, those that are working in the buildings, you have a very difficult job. As a son, I know that I have not been easy on my mom, and so I am extremely grateful for all the moms that are out there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Okay. Item number eight, staff report to the board. There is none this week. So moving on to number nine, members of the public wishing to address the board. We have two protocols. And school board members encourage, encourage the public participation. Your civic input is appreciated. Board members will not respond to your comments during the meeting. The superintendent or designee will follow up with you after the meeting if action is needed. Instead of speaking at a meeting, you may also send an email to the board@tacomaktwelve.wa.us. Please contact the board office in advance of the meeting for disability accommodations. So the first option is in-person open meeting, where a general counsel, Trueblood, will call your name when it's your turn to address the board. Please speak into the microphone. You may have up to three minutes to share your comments, or if there is a large number of speakers, time may be limited at the president's discretion. So general counsel, have we got speakers tonight?
Yes, there are five speakers this evening. The first one's name is Holly Rollison, and her subject is bullying.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak to you today regarding the issue of bullying in my son's special needs autism class and the district's response and policies. We are blessed with truly wonderful teachers and parent educators at Franklin Elementary. Until this year, I've never felt the need to fight for my son's rights as a special needs student at TPS. On the contrary, after every IEP meeting, I leave in awe of the school experience these amazing individuals are able to create for my son and his classmates. My son, like many in his class, is completely nonverbal. I have to rely on my own careful observation and on the adults in his life to tell me when something is wrong. It's distressing to learn your child has endured being bullied all year in silence because he does not have words to tell his own mother what's happening to him. At the start of this school year, a new student joined us. Within a week, I began noticing changes in my son's feelings about school, a place he loves. When I asked staff why most days he was crying while there, I learned he was being targeted for bullying by another student. Because the staff were not able to volunteer information and could only answer with extreme caution as to privacy when asked directly, I began to pay close attention. The student regularly yells at my son and his classmates and uses constant profanity. The student's nickname for my son is an expletive, followed by baby. One incident involved this student standing in front of my son on the swing and repeatedly yelling this obscene name at him, flashing him sexually, then continuing to scream at him across the playground after being removed by adults. The student has shown aggression to the point an adult has to physically put themselves in between them for my son's protection. And in our reports, you will read about outrageous assaults on staff and other students. This student frequently engages in violent and obscene verbal scripting that includes death threats to others, including myself. I have heard this student yelling curses at my son as my son ran to get away from him. Many days this year when the class was short-staffed, I have had to keep my son home for his own safety. Since September, I have repeatedly reached out to those in authority about this issue. We are disappointed in what's happened and come to you as parents who trusted the district with our children and were kept in the dark all year. Our children were subjected to harassment, intimidation, and bullying without any substantial consequences to the aggressor, whose welfare is also important to us. This child has been allowed to dominate class resources, keep others from learning, cause others to miss school days, and made it an unsafe environment for our children and our beloved staff. We, the 12 parents who signed our cover letter, have six questions for our school board. One, why has this been allowed to continue for the entire year when the district has been aware since September? Two, why do TPS policies tie the hands of its staff who can't tell us what's happening to our own children? Three, why do TPS policies seem designed to protect only the district and the aggressor and not the most vulnerable students, our disabled children who are unable to speak for themselves? Four, why have we been met with vague answers and suspicion as to how we obtained information about our own children? Five, why are parents who come forward not informed of the option to submit an HIV incident report?
Go ahead, you can say it.
Thank you. This should be standard procedure when bullying is reported. Why was outrageous, why was this outrageous behavior allowed to continue for so long in a special needs classroom when in a regular neurotypical classroom, it would be swiftly and effectively dealt with? You have received folders containing our reports and documentation, and several important documents have been added since last night, so please refer to the folders. Thank you for your service to our children and the opportunity to bring this to your attention today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our second speaker is Vonda McElroy from Franklin.
Okay, also from Franklin.
Hello. My name is Vonda McElroy. I'm the mother of an autistic child and a proud PTSA board member, a routine volunteer at Franklin Elementary. I've been at Franklin since my child was four years old. He will be 10 this summer. The majority of his life has consisted of his family and his school family. And I just want to echo what Ms. Holly said about the wonderful staff, the principals, and the families at Franklin Elementary. This is definitely not a comment on them whatsoever. I come with a heavy heart and a mother's pain. It was not easy to write this, not easy to experience, nor easy to listen to my child and others speak of what has been happening to them since the beginning of the school year. At the end of March, I was picking up my child for therapy. I sat in the hall waiting for him. I could hear screaming coming down the hallway. I began walking towards my child's classroom, and the screaming grew louder. As I walked into the classroom, I saw the child punching Ms. Jessie, his teacher, repeatedly, screaming at her and the children several expletives. And while two of the parishes tried, parish tried to usher the children out of, out of the classroom, my son and other student were visibly upset, hovering in a corner. I was flabbergasted, angry, and scared. When I got my son out of the classroom, we left his backpack and lunch pill because I wanted to remove him immediately from the situation. As we sat in the car, I began asking my son about what had happened. Over the next two weeks, my child slowly began to tell me and his father about the many incidents that involved this other child. I heard and unfortunately witnessed him hitting other students, threatening to kill staff and students, hitting his teacher, throwing things in the classroom, hurting his peers, and much more. It took everything in me not to break down and cry in front of my son. I felt utterly helpless and betrayed. The most important job that we all have to achieve in our communities is to keep them safe. I'm angry that there were no methods put in place to ensure my child's safety, no policies to ensure that the teacher and principals could speak to me as the mother of a victim of bullying, no guidance offered from the district on how to rectify the situation. Myself and two other mothers began speaking to one another, and this is how we found out who the child was, what had been happening, and how all of our children were emotionally and psychologically affected by the continued verbal and physical abuse of this particular student. When my rage calmed down, I directly asked his teacher what had been happening to my child, and out of fear, she could only tell me that she had tried to ask for help to ensure my child would not be bullied, but that nothing had come of that request. I felt for her, but I was confused. Why couldn't my son's teacher not inform me that he was being bullied? Why did I have to witness the abuse for me to know what was going on? Why was my child and other children's IEPs broken to accommodate one child? Why did the district not give support to the teacher and staff? Why was the child not properly placed? Why was no action taken to protect my baby? My trust is completely broken. I am devastated. I quit my job today so I can be more present for my son. I am frustrated, and I want change now. Our kids are protected by the ADA and countless laws, but for the past eight months, Tacoma Public Schools has decided they weren't worth protecting. I stand with all the families that have been affected by this ongoing incident. I support any and all efforts by Ms. Jessie Sinclair. She's a magnificent teacher, and even in the midst of her physical harm, she's been a light for my son. Please do something to protect her, the staff, and the children of Franklin's Freedom of Autism classroom. My trust is broken, but you all can fix that. Thank you.
Is there someone else from Franklin as well?
I'm not sure if the third is from Franklin. It's Ken Paulson, Kent Paulson, regarding safety.
So, yeah. If you can wait one second, Mr. Paulson.
Mr. Paulson, can you please follow up? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I spoke here a month ago, middle of March. And that would, anybody who wants to get the background information, you to watch that. I'm really following up because, and this is about buses, buses picking up three- and four-year-olds where the bus is in the street, and the bus arm is not out to keep little kids from, three- and four-year-olds from running out in front of the bus, which would then put them into traffic if they did too many steps in front of the bus. I accidentally drove at the exact moment in time, and I saw all these kids running, and I said, "This is an accident waiting to happen." So I want you to understand my perspective. I don't think you understand the speed of the need to fix this. So, something personal. 12 years ago, my daughter was murdered, a home school teacher. Stranger stalker was in jail, bailed out. There was one bit of information that could have changed the whole outcome, but nobody acted on it. This is from investigation on my part later after the fact. This is from investigation on my part later after the fact. Somebody had stepped out of their box and done something. They had a basis to do something, but they didn't. But he was out, did what he did. So, this arm not being out doesn't seem like a big deal. But I was right there at the moment. These kids were running right towards the bus, and there was a bunch of them. And three- and four-year-olds have no fear. They had a ball and dropped it and accidentally kicked it. They'd run right out in the street. Okay, because I live across from the school, and I see these kids sometimes running out in the street, I go, "Please, please, 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 stop." Somebody else does, may not do that. What you need to do, to have the bus, put the arm out, put the stop sign out. It doesn't matter if people have the stop. Just do it. You want to protect these kids.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Superintendent, can we have someone follow up, please? With the, figure out about the bus and the arm? That makes sense. Okay, next.
Thank you. Our fourth speaker tonight is Zeona, who is a student at Stewart Middle School, and the subject is bullying.
My name's Zeona, and I get bullied at school. When I talk to someone, I feel like I'm not, I don't feel safe. People threaten me and call me names, call me off. When I go to talk to someone, all they tell me is, "That's good to know." They don't put themselves in my, they don't know how it fits.
Thank you. And I know that Superintendent on special assignments Carla Santorno spoke with Zeona's mother this week.
Perfect, thank you.
Our fifth speaker is racism. The topic is racism, and it's also a Stewart student. And the name is Cesaria? Zeraya, thank you. S-Z-A-R-I-Y-A-H, Zeraya.
Today, I would like to talk about microaggressions and racist comments and acts towards students at Stewart Middle School. During this year, majority of the students they send to the office have been students of color. I've noticed when Caucasian students are out of dress code, nothing is said, or if something is said to them, it's, "Please do not wear it." On the other hand, when students of color are told, are told not to wear that again and get a call home to provide alternate clothes. I've also noticed when it comes to getting in trouble or punishment, students of color get worse or harsh punishment. For example, my little sister was too. I have a student who's still happy to be Caucasian, but it wasn't his first offense. All they did was swap his class. When a friend was, when a friend of mine was hit on the butt, she was told, she told them to stop and touched them back. My friend was sent home and suspended for a day. My friend was black. My brother was told by the principal it was Martin Luther King time and to respect it. I was yelled at by the principal for wearing a bandana, but a student that was Caucasian and wore hat were told nothing. Um, my principal also got mad at me for contacting my mother before he took me to the office and started yelling at me.
Thank you, Zeraya. And Superintendent on special assignment Carla Santorno also spoke with Zeraya's mom this week.
Thank you. Okay, is that anymore?
That concludes our in-person public comment. We do have one written comment that's also appended to the agenda tonight. It's Brian Bissell regarding Wikipedia access for students.
Thank you. Moving to item numbers 10 is the consent agenda.
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any comments on the consent agenda or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 5-0. Item 11, policy matters, there are none this evening. Item 12, financial report. The district's next financial, next quarterly financial report will be in May. Financial statements can be found on the district website, HTTPS colon backslash backslash www.tacomaschools.org, backslash department, backslash business and finance. Item 13, curriculum and instruction, we have none this evening. Item 14, business matters. 14.1 is the approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment Number 1 to contract number TSD dash 21 dash 091 between Tacoma School District Number 10 and Coors Moon Construction for the Synthetic Fields Upgrade Bundle Project.
Yes, this is a part of the continual process of adding additional sites to our field upgrades associated with our 2020 project. The chief operating officer recommends that the board of directors approve GMP amendment number 1, which states the Guaranteed Maximum Price Scope for Work at Mason Middle School, Geodrome Middle School, Browns Point Elementary, Lincoln High School. Chief operating officer also recommends that the board authorize the superintendent to designate GMP amendment number 1 in the amount of $9,218,150, including sales cost.
Okay, we have a motion?
I move to adopt item 14.1.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions about 14.1? Hearing none? Oh, you have a question?
Yeah. Just a question around the material of the fields with regard to their safety, the safety component of the materials. There's different degrees of their safety components. Wondering how those decisions are going to be made, or have they already been made? And which of your contractors taking those decisions around the cushioning to prevent concussions and things like that?
Those decisions have been made, I believe, six months ago. But I will tell you about the material which we utilize in our field. It's the same turf that you see, I think, if you're told large amount, half of the 1400s we use. I can provide you with additional information on this issue.
Okay, maybe just a follow-up on the safety product, the safety standards that the fields have. Thank you.
Okay, great. Item 14.2.
We didn't approve.
I'm sorry. Okay, let's, let's vote then. If no comments, let's just vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, 5-0. Now 14.2. Approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment Number 1A to contract number TSD dash 22 dash 075 between Tacoma School District Number 10 and ATS Automation for the HVAC Indoor Air Quality Upgrades Project.
This also is a continual process of adding additional sites to our HVAC upgrades process. The chief operating officer recommends that the board of directors approve GMP amendment 1A, which states Guaranteed Maximum Price Scope for Work at Fernhill Elementary, Edison Elementary, Termin Elementary. The chief operating officer also recommends the board authorize the superintendent or designate GMP amendment 1A in the amount of $4,704,015, including sales cost.
I move to adopt item 14.2.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions about this item?
I just have a comment. I learned more about HVAC systems and protocol, labor costs. I read the report, and I just want to say that I appreciate the, the level of detail that's in there and making that also public. So, I just, I learned a lot reading this, so thanks.
Any other comments? Okay, may I call the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing any abstentions? Hearing none? It passes 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Okay, so moving on to other business. Item 15, there we have none. And so, we are at committee, board comments, and reports. And for the pleasure of the chair tonight, I, I'm going to go first and talk about a couple of, of big things that have happened since our last board meeting.
Elizabeth, Director, President, Paris is here.
Oh, there you are. I didn't see you there. Welcome, welcome. Did you have comments that you'd like to make?
Hi, board. I just want to say hi.
Hi.
This week is our Spirit Week for Intercultural. For the viewers online, if you don't know what Intercultural is, Tacoma's very diverse school, full of rich culture, of so many different cultures. So, Intercultural is a way for us to showcase that and showcase the pride and celebrate all of the cultures that are included. So, this week is our Spirit Week. I think Friday is Intercultural for the community, so please come out. I don't know anything for sure, so please reach out to our principal for more details if you need them. But I did just want to advertise for my school that this is happening, and I did want to extend an invitation to all that is here. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I do have a question, actually. Is the, isn't there an assembly happening? Is that on Friday, or is that next Friday?
Hmm, I'm not sure. No, ma'am. So, if you contact our, because I know that dates are still being discussed, so I don't want to give you a date, and then it changes.
I was trying to find out earlier, because I was at Mount T on Tuesday, so, and I was, I was talking about the assembly, and I didn't write it down, and I wanted to just make sure, so.
Yes, ma'am, so I'm sure. Yeah, just contact our principal, or I can email you our student, our president, our ASV president, and I'm sure I can get those answers to you.
Thank you, Paris.
Thank you, Paris. And if you'd copy us all, that'd be great. Okay. So, we've had a very busy couple of weeks here at Tacoma Public Schools. And first, last two weeks, last week on Thursday, we had a study session, which was really quite exciting. We had the superintendent on special assignment Carla Santorno, who gave a presentation on the equity framework work that the staff has been putting into play, the curriculum and the modules that they're developing for professional development, and, and what the vision is for teaching, you know, anti-discrimination and equity and across our district. And that set the stage for a conversation amongst the board members about our anti-racist policy, that we actually don't have one, but that we want to develop one, and the components of what that meant to all of us and how we wanted to proceed from here. So, it was, I thought, a really engaging conversation, and I think we left with, with some real commitment to continue to push forward to this, make this sure this district is an anti-racist district and that equity and any, and, you know, acceptance and inclusion for all. So, does anyone have any comments they wanted to make on that? Or when you get your turn, you can add to it. So, that was, that was last Thursday. And then on Friday, we had a very exciting visit from the Deputy Secretary of the U.S. Department of Education, Cindy Martin, who was doing a tour of some, a couple of districts in Washington State, and she spent the whole day with us, and really was a spectacular day. We started at Sammy in the Learning Center, which is of course, you know, such a high point because it's a, a school in a zoo, in a park, in a city. It's such a unique environment, and the learning styles and, and the, the depth of subject matter, practicums that go on were not lost on the deputy secretary. She was really impressed with teachers, the students. We had students along every part of our, of the day with her, where they were walking her through what they do. It really is mind-blowing, the kind of engagement they have in their education from, based on, you know, a traditional school model. So, that was fabulous. We also had met with our community partners. We had a big meeting of a lot of electeds from, from the area, as well as our partners at Metro Parks in the city and the county. And, and we, you know, really, you talked a lot about, focused on Beyond the Bell, which is our before and after-school program, programming that we offer. And we do, the only way we can do it is with community partnerships. And so, there was a big emphasis on, on how in Tacoma, the reason we achieve innovation and success for all of our students is because we partner with people that can speak to our students and, and reach out to families in ways that, you know, are very specific to their needs. And that, I think she was very impressed with that. She did say that she was amazed that actually it seemed like Tacoma actually understood the meaning of what the ESSR funds were for and the, the, some of the policies that had been put forward from the Department of Education. She's been around the country, and she says this is the, one of the places that she saw had the best use that aligned with what their vision was. So, we were all very proud about that. And then we actually spent the afternoon at Lister Elementary, which was, again, another wonderful showcase of one of our schools within a very tight community where it's all about partnering to serve families and, and students and the, that need their academic and social and, and, you know, kind of communal needs. And she was very, I think, moved by the students at Lister who spoke with such grace and honesty and were so engaged in the classwork. And I just wanted to commend all the staff at, at, you know, all the schools that we went to, and also the students for just showing up and making Tacoma proud. So, that was just a great day. Then the next thing we wanted to share about was, oh, today. Well, I guess I'll let Director Keating talk about the WAZDA regional event that she and I went to with other folks from our region, on the WAZDA, other board members from across Pierce County. But the last thing I'll talk about is I went to this, Holly Bamford Hunt from the Bamford Foundation hosted an event this morning in Seattle at, called the WOW Gallery, which is the Wonder of Women Gallery. It's in the Pacific, the Pacific Place Shopping Mall on the third floor. There's a, there's a gallery, and it is absolutely spectacular. It's called Dear Sista, I See You. And if you have an opportunity to, to get there and go through this exhibition, it is really mind-blowing. Veronica Very is the founder and visionary, a woman from, from our community area here. And she and her husband, Hayawatha D., he goes by Hayawatha D., but his last name's Davis. He's the artist, and he has done 58 portraits of black women, iconic black women in, in our history, as well as women just from the community that he, that mean something. And it's, it's, I, I can't even describe it. It's so uplifting and spectacular. And it's, it's something that I'm hoping we can, we can expose a lot of our, especially our black young youth, to women, girls, too, so that they can see themselves in a, such a positive and uplifting way. So, if you haven't, and you have seen it, and you're interested, the gallery is open Thursdays through Sundays from noon till 7:00 PM, and you have, you can get tickets online. Okay, so I will just turn it over to, who wants to go next? Okay, to Vice President Keating.
All right, then. So, I did attend the event with the Deputy Secretary, and it was, it was really special because we, we got to engage with students in small circles and/or small groups. But the students really led, and the staff really led, like, the work and demonstrated the work that they were doing. And it was just really inspiring. And we ended in a kindergartner room, kindergarten room at Lister. And I'm, maybe because that's a soft spot for me. It was one of my favorite spaces to be in. And at Lister, I would add that each of the classrooms we visited, they were, well, the Deputy Secretary read a book from Justice Sotomayor, which was a beautiful book. And so, in a second grade class, and then we watched both a fourth grade and a kindergarten class go through an SEL lesson. And both were just really, I don't know, very inspiring, very helpful. And then the WAZDA Director Area 3, so we are in Director Area 3. We had a retreat last week at the Pierce County Skill Center, and Bethel School District hosted. That was really great. It was the first in-person retreat that WAZDA's done, well, done for two years or over two years. So, it was really, really nice to be just in the same space. And really, the focus on the conversation in the retreat was around what did we learn? And what, you know, what were the challenges? What did we learn, and how did we overcome and innovate throughout the impact of COVID? And I want to give a shout-out. So, I think it was on April 15th, but Silas had their opening musical for Mamma Mia. And my daughter and I went, and it's- And my daughter and I went, and it's, it was really fun. The students were so super talented and really engaged, and it was just a really, really fun event to attend. So I know they, I think they had their final show last on Sunday, I think. But anyways, so that was really awesome. And, and then on Friday, President Von Bright and Director Stroger and I attended the Hilltop Heritage Solar Panel Event, which I'll let Director Stroger talk a little bit more about. What else? I feel like there was a lot. We were really, really busy. And then on Monday, or on Tuesday, I mentioned to Paris, I was at Mount Oklahoma for their LGBTQIA committee. And Oasis Youth Center presented, their staff did, which was really great. And then afterwards, I had an impromptu, unexpected tour of the health clinic that is being built. So that was really fun. It's in the midst of construction, but they have all the drywall up and painting. And so it was really, it was a really great, unexpected tour to see just a little bit more up close, what that health center is going to look like, and how excited both Multicare and the staff are about it. So that's really exciting. And then I'm going to go to the Swan Creek Park ribbon cutting, right? Swan Creek Park?
Yep.
That's right? Okay. That's on Saturday at 10:30, I think.
The ceremony's at 10:30, but it, they start at 10:00.
Okay, well, I have 10:30, so I will be there before that. And then, and then Director Stroger and I will be attending the Walk and Roll Event at Whitman Elementary on May 6th. So be really excited about that.
Okay, thank you for sharing. Director Stroger, since you were past the baton on the solar panels, since I forgot to mention that one, go for it.
Appreciate that, because that's all I got for y'all tonight.
Awesome.
Yeah, that was a good event. My daughters got to attend. It was awesome. They had, when you walk in, there were different tables on display about, you know, ways to save the environment, if you will. My daughters learned about styrofoam in the ocean and things of that nature, and how that affects animals, thanks to Dana from PCD. I think that was her table, but that was exciting. What was exciting to me to learn, though, was that this initiative itself was student-led. Right? That's what's, that's what's powerful about the whole thing. Like, shout out to Ms. Harris for, for creating a space. Ms. Harris is the teacher who, I guess, sparked the flame, and then the young folks took it from there. But like, just to create an environment where young people feel empowered to do something that changes the community, that's exciting. Like, all, all it takes is for someone to say, I believe in you, you can do this, and then something like this can happen. I think I heard that it saves the school, this solar panel display on top of the roof saves a school anywhere from $10,000 to $14,000 a year, something like that. I could be making that up.
I think it was five.
Five, okay, but I beefed it up a little bit. Either way, it saves the school itself some money, a student-led initiative, which is extremely exciting. It was good to be able to go there, check it out, maybe see what it looks like on the roof, maybe not. I don't know what happened. But it was very nice, and, yeah, it was a good time. So just shout out to Ms. Harris, shout out to Hilltop Heritage and the students there who put that on, who will have moved on to high school now. But, you know what I mean. Thank you.
All right. Director McElroy?
I was really moved today. I would say I've been moved this past month by the courage of our students, of our staff, the past two months, really, our students and our staff and our parents. It takes a lot of bravery to come before this dais and speak your truth, and speak truth to power, and talk about issues that are happening directly to you, knowing that you're drawing attention to yourself and to others. There's a lot that happened today that I didn't even know about, honestly. But what I will talk about is the hierarchy of needs of people. Our physiological needs, shelter, food and water, our safety needs, personal security, love and belonging, your self-esteem, and then eventually we get to self-actualization. That's the hierarchy of needs by Maslow. And I feel that in all the testimony that we've had, our public comment section this past month, we're talking about our hierarchy of needs, what we need in our schools. We need to feel safe. In anti-racist district, we need to feel like we belong, right? And when we have parents and students, I'm thankful to Paris. Every time you show up here, you're brave. And every parent and the children who came today, that was so brave. I don't know what we're going to do, our next steps. I can't make that statement, but I know that Tacoma has that motto for a reason. Every student, every day, when we say that, we say it to ourselves, we believe it. I believe in our superintendent. I know he's going to do the right thing, and he's going to support these families. And I'm proud to be a part of this district. I know we're going to make this right. I pray that next year, we don't have these same conversations coming up, because change is incremental. And every time a parent comes before this dais and talks about an issue that's going on, like Ken talked about safety, hopefully by next year, some of those issues are resolved. If not in entirety, at least incrementally, a half step better. We're trying to be better every day. I would give a report on all the fun things I've been doing, but this work is not always fun, and sometimes it takes bravery. And so I'm proud of every student who shows up in our buildings. I'm proud of every parent who drops their children off. I'm thankful for your trust. I pray that we can continue to earn your trust and do right by our students. And if you feel we're not doing that, please contact us, because everyone at this dais believes every student every day, and our superintendent believes in you too. So I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve my community, and I'm thankful for the bravery of all those who came forward this past two months.
Thank you. Director Leon?
So I was at the Stadium Musical last week. It was Grease, and it was wonderfully produced and performed. High standards they always have there, with Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Schaefer leading, leading the students. So it was very entertaining, a lot of fun. Good job to their, their whole group for doing that. Safe Streets. Many of you already know that their CEO, Dr. Priscilla Listisich, is retiring, so they're still searching for a CEO. So we're supposed to let everybody in the community know, if there's anybody you think is qualified, to please apply. They're still obviously working a lot with partner organizations around safety in Tacoma. And part of the last meeting had attendance of the police departments, the county and the city sheriffs, and assistant deputies were there to give some reports. Things you might expect in there around crime numbers going up and officer numbers going down. But I think it's important that we all understand that a lot of this is, a lot of crime is due to the economic state of what's going on in people's families. So I think as we try to build up our communities, build them up, build up our education and our partnerships, we're going to improve upon those things. The, I appreciate the board, the understanding my leave. Last month, I was in Peru doing volunteer medical teaching work that I do each year. So I'm usually there for a month. And it was, again, quite eye-opening, again, to see the, the kind of, basically the carnage that's gone through the rest of the world. We've seen it here from the pandemic. And I didn't, I only met two families down there. I didn't lose any immediate or close family members to the pandemic. They had the most deaths per capita of any country in the world, in my home country. So it was very difficult to hear all those stories, but the resilience I saw down there was, was strong also in how people are continuing to fight through. So I took a couple residents with me, taught them, and taught the docs down there, and they were able to teach our residents a lot, too. So we got a lot out of the interchange of ideas. So I thank the board for that, that time to let me do that. And that's it.
Well, thank you. All right. So the announcement of item 18, announcement for the next regular board meetings. We will be meeting here again at 6:00 PM on May 12th for our next business meeting, followed on May 19th by a, at 6:00 PM for a study session, and again, May 26th for, 6:00 PM for a business meeting. All right, Superintendent, anything else on your end?
Nope, I just want to reassure Director McElroy, I appreciate your comments, and we will are following up. And I really appreciate the sentiment of we're, we're going to keep on getting better. It's a very dynamic conversation, and it's challenging. But that doesn't mean that we can't keep on working at it. And so I think that's what makes us all at our best as a community. And so I want to echo those comments. I appreciate, we can't do what we don't know. And we got to keep on talking, even through the difficult times. And so we're committed to that. So thank you.
All right. With that, we are officially adjourned.
Go Avs.